Got a little dry. Well, thank you. Good morning. Thanks for being here on a beautiful summer morning. Unfortunately, perhaps a tad too warm, but it seems like the AC is working for now. It's the August break. The Senate's still in Washington, D.C. I'm kidding them. But it appears that they have, at this point, according to interviews I see from their leaders, abandoned their quest to deprive as many people of health care as possible.[32.11][32.11][applause] This whole thing, the House bill, I mean, President actually sometimes agrees with him. I think he called the House bill either mean or cruel. I can't remember which. And he was right. And the House bill was nothing about health care or improving health care or providing health care. It was an attempt to rescind taxes that are being used to provide subsidies to lower-income people to purchase individual policies through exchanges. And the most egregious tax that they wanted to repeal was a 3.8% tax on investment income over $200,000. And of course, as you know, investors pay a lower rate of taxes than people who work for a living because of some capital gains, something which I have always said, that doesn't make any sense to me. Everybody, you know, we could lower individual income tax rates if we just leveled the fact for two years during rate administration. I don't know why, but this was before I was there. We had the same rate of taxes for earned income and investment income. And we didn't see suddenly the capital markets were bereft of investors. In fact, everything went well. So they shouldn't get that break. But anyway, Obamacare imposed a 3.8% tax, which means they would pay almost 20%, of course. You know, someone, an Army captain pays like 28%, but anyway, those poor investors at 23.8%. That, here's what it would have done. Obviously, nothing for people who earn less than $200,000. Forty-seven, 44 people, 200,000 to 500,000, get up to $1 million, pretty sweet, $54,000 tax rate. But then, the most important people, the job creators, the one-tenth of 1% who earn investment income over $3.75 million, would have got a $200,000 tax break. Of course, in order to do that, you have to take away health care from 23 million people. But other than that, it was a great plan.[174.01][174.01][laughter] So that one, you know, passed by a very small margin in the House. And as you know, since then, the Senate tried a whole number of iterations and has, I think, moved on to other things. Affordable Care Act needs work, I said from day one. I was one of the last people to agree to vote for it because the House bill was pretty good. The House bill had national exchanges, which meant very large groups with lower premiums. The House bill had a national not-for-profit exchange plan, which I believe would have demonstrated and a path toward Medicare for All or single payer. So wait a minute, here's this law.[215.62][215.62][applause] And the House bill also contained my provision to take away the antitrust immunity of the health insurance industry. As many of you know, the insurance industry is the only industry in America exempt from antitrust law except for professional sports.[234.34][234.34][laughter] And, you know, it's an artifact of something that happened in the 1940s. So that was in the House bill. That was stripped out in the Senate. And we ended up with a Senate bill with state-run exchanges, much smaller groups, no national not-for-profit, et cetera. And there are a lot of places, particularly rural areas, where there's no plan or only one plan available to people. So I introduced this frame. I said, "Look, you guys, maybe when you want to get serious, we can talk about how we fix the Affordable Care Act." So I introduced an individual bill to set up a national not-for-profit exchange. So then all those people in those counties and those places would have an option. It hasn't ever received any consideration yet, but if we ever get around to actually trying to fix the Affordable Care Act as opposed to cut taxes and take away people's coverage, maybe we'll get there. There's a number of other things that are important that are going on. The, you know, I was gonna say one thing. Oops. Oh, well.[308.58][308.58][laughter] Just put that one back up there. That's good. I'll just hold, oh, look. All right. I'll just hold this one up. This, I have never seen the citizenry of my district so engaged. This is contacts to my office, email, mail, and phone calls. It's more than twice...[336.31][336.31][applause] More than twice the normal rate. And in fact, earlier this year, I did a little experiment because when I come to a town hall like this, I can't get particular political. I can be factual, but not talk about organizing politics or elections or anything because this is an official town hall. So I did some off-year campaign town halls. I call it community forums. And unfortunately, you know, the first one, we had a room that was bigger than this. And the staff said, "No, we need a bigger room, bigger room." Finally, we said, "Well, let's rent the biggest place we can find." We ended up at the LCC Gymnasium, and 2,400 people showed up. And I asked, "How many of you have actively engaged in politics previously or not actively engaged?" More than half the people stood up. So, you know, there is, you know, a desire to help shape the future a little bit more. I think sometimes we get a little complacent about, you know, elections will work out one way or another. This one shocked people. So, you know, those contacts are great. That has helped us really to block the repeal of the Affordable Care Act. It's, you know, that's...[416.81][416.81][applause] But then there were some things I thought might be somewhat positive with Trump. I mean, he kept talking about a trillion dollars for infrastructure. As most of you know, I'm the senior Democrat on the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. And we could afford, I mean, we could well afford to invest a trillion dollars in our infrastructure, which makes the country more fuel-efficient. We can move goods and people more efficiently. You know, we'd be more competitive in the world economy. It would provide millions of jobs. He's doing the work, and they're not just construction jobs. They're engineering jobs, design jobs. When you talk about transit vehicles, they're manufacturing jobs. They're high-tech jobs. I mean, it goes across the whole economy. And we have the strongest Buy America requirements of any part of the government for transportation, way stronger than the Pentagon. So, you know, this is, and would have been fabulous. So I decided to give them some productive options. And I provided three bills to the President and his chief infrastructure advisor and the head of his economic council. They're pretty, I think, they're bills that have no political risk or virtually none for anybody, but I'll describe them. First one is every time you buy an imported good, there's a little tiny tax embedded in the price of that good. It's an abhorrent tax on the value of imported goods that come through our ports. That was put in place during the Reagan era. So we collect that tax day in, day out. But Congress has seen fit to divert a substantial amount of that tax away from the designated lawful purpose, which is maintaining our harbors and ports. So we have now, as we do in all our infrastructure, a huge backlog of maintenance in our harbors. We've got jetties that are crumbling. We have harbors that have shoaled in of our 59 largest harbors in the United States. We have 35% of capacity on a daily basis in terms of their authorized deaths. Yet Congress keeps diverting the money. There's $9 billion theoretically in a trust fund, which is unspent and could well be invested. So I actually, last year, during the consideration of Bill White, much to surprise the chairman, I got an amendment out of the committee unanimously with a number of Freedom Caucus Republicans supporting it to say, "Let's spend the Harbor Maintenance Trust Fund on harbor maintenance." Radical idea in Washington, D.C. Unfortunately, it was too radical for the Speaker. He stripped it out of the bill before it went to the floor. So this year, I introduced a freestanding bill to do that. And I introduced it with a member of the Freedom Caucus, if you watch Washington. That's the right wing of the Republican Party, who their leadership can't figure out how to work with. So I got a guy named Mike Keller in Pennsylvania. Then Trump keeps talking about what a mess our airports are. And we've got a pretty nice little airport here for them, keeping up and doing a big investment. But we've got a lot of airports that are in rough shape, but they're bonded out. And they need to increase what's called a passenger facility charge, a user fee. The money that they raise from that has to go back into improving the airport. And I'm actually, I was the original Democratic sponsor of this idea because I live in Springfield. Eugene, years ago, built the first new airport. And they were making the citizenry pay for it on a bond levy. And I said, "Well, that's kind of not fair because I use the airport more than most people in Eugene. I live in Springfield. I'm not paying a penny." People come down from Corvallis, and people come up from Roseburg. So why shouldn't we contribute? And why should the people of Eugene have to carry the burden? So that's been the law now for more than 25 years. But Congress hasn't allowed the airports to increase their passenger facility charges. And some were bonded out. So I introduced another bill with an even further right member of the Freedom Caucus named Massey from Kentucky to allow airports to increase passenger facility charges to make these improvements. Now, the funny thing about all this is, is the airlines are adamantly opposed to this. And here's what they say. "If an airport charges you another $1 or $2 to improve your airport experience, you will never fly again."[690.87][690.87][laughter] It's so nonsensical. And I said, "But you just charged me $50 for a bag."[697.41][697.41][laughter] "Oh, that's part of the ticket." And I said, "Oh, okay." So anyway, we've introduced that bill. What the airlines are afraid of is some airports are gonna build more gates. More gates means more competition. More competition means lower prices. And so they don't want that to happen. In fact, the airports, this is something I just spent the last two months almost successfully opposing the chairman of my committee because he wants to privatize the air traffic control here in the United States. And this is a tip. If I thus far have held them off, but if I fail, buy airline stock. Because here's the way it's gonna work. Right now, we finance the entire air traffic system in the United States with a ticket tax, 7.5% on every ticket. It's fair. You buy a $100 ticket, you pay 7.5 bucks. You buy a $1,000 ticket, you pay 75 bucks. So it's a progressive tax. We have the safest, largest, most advanced air traffic control system in the world. And the airlines have said for years, "That's our money." And I said, "What do you mean, 'your money'?" They said, "Well, it's our money." I said, "No, I buy a ticket. I pay the tax. The tax goes to the government. The government flies us around and, you know, they keep us safe and controls the airspace." No, it's our money. So the bill, as proposed by the chairman, repeals the 7.5% ticket tax. The airlines would raise their prices 7.5%. And then they will charge you per head to use the national airspace, probably 25 bucks a seat, to use the national airspace. And they say, "Well, how do you know the airlines will keep the money?" I said, "Well, because five years ago this summer, John Micah, the then Republican chairman of the committee, you know, managed to not pass an reauthorization of the FAA. The ticket tax lapsed for 15 days. Every airline in America raised their rate 7.5% except for Alaska Airlines. Everybody else just took the money and ran." So anyway, that's a major battle I'm involved in excluding of so far, and we'll see what happens in September. The FAA needs to be reauthorized by the end of September, so there's a little time pressure coming here. And then my third bill, which is the big one, is roads, bridges, highways, transit. We have 140,000 bridges in the United States that need substantial repair or replacement. 40% of the pavement in the national highway system is deteriorated to the point where you can't just re-code it. You've gotta actually reface it, dig it out, major work. And, you know, that's, and transit has now over $100 billion backlog in transit just to bring existing transit up to a state of good repair, let alone build out new transit options to give people an opportunity to get out of their cars, get out of congestion. And that's a big bill altogether. So I've been fighting this fight for years and years, also with Obama administration. I tried to get an investment, and he was afraid to raise the gas tax, so it never happened. We haven't raised a federal gas tax since 1993, 18.3 cents a gallon since 1993. So I decided, you know, I've tried different things, apparel tax and this and that. And I just find it's a, I can propose something that is so minuscule and so inoffensive, I don't see how anybody can support it. So I'm just saying, index existing gas tax, cap it. It can never go up more than, index it to construction cost inflation, fleet fuel content, but cap it. Say it can never go up more than a penny and a half a gallon a year. And then we project, what if we did that and we borrowed $30 billion a year for the next 15 years to invest in roads, bridges, highways, and transit? If we could pay it off, we could finance $500 billion, which would, you know, help a lot to deal with this backlog, put a lot of people back to work. And I've gone to my committee, and I said to Mike Keller, "So raise your hand if you think you're gonna lose your election if gas goes up 1.5 cents a gallon." And no one does. But, and I've talked to the White House head of, you know, infrastructure, a guy named D.J. Grimmern, about this. And I said, "Look, I'm delivering you bipartisan bills with the Freedom Caucus on board. You know, when you guys can't figure out how to work with them or get your own guys to work together, I mean, this is like a gift. I mean, here's three bills, $570 billion of investment. This gets you halfway toward your trillion dollars." There are some in the White House who want to go down that path. Unfortunately, his economic advisor, Gary Cohn, former president of Goldman Sachs, has become obsessed with another idea, which is, he calls, you got this from the Australian ambassador, the conservatives did this in Australia for a little while. They don't do it anymore. They bribed their provinces to sell their public infrastructure to their pension fund, private interest, so they could make money on it. And they would give you a bonus if you sold a billion dollars' worth of infrastructure. They'd give you another $100 million a thousand. They did this for a while. They don't do it anymore. And he's now sold this lock, stock, and barrel to Gary Cohn. And Gary Cohn is saying, they call it asset recycling.[1020.16][1020.16][laughter] And I said, "That's privatization." The chairman was really excited about it, Bill Schuster. And I said, "Bill, that's privatization." "No, no, no. It's asset recycling." So I said, "Well, what do you do after you sell it the first time?" You know, I mean, okay, so we sell the Eugene Airport. All right, we get some money for selling Eugene Airport. They assess new fees on us to use our airport. I said, "Then we spend that money for, you know, improvements." And I said, "Then how do we finance, how do we maintain improvements? And how do we finance the next set?" I said, "We sell that infrastructure." I mean, it's a dead end. So I've offered what I think is my superior alternative. You need a sustainable source of funding, which my bill would provide with a simple indexation of the gas tax.[1066.83][1066.83][applause] And then finally, the other area where I had grade O was, you know, residents always talk about NAFTA as the worst trade deal ever. I agree. I opposed it. And, you know, Clinton and Gore promised us it would bring, you know, huge benefits with hundreds of thousands of jobs, yet they just didn't tell us they're gonna be on the other side of the border. Workers who are exploited can't form unions, and for companies who dump the trash and the waste out the back door, don't follow any environmental regulations. So, you know, we defeated the TPP. Trump takes credit for it, but we killed it in Congress before he became president.[1113.04][1113.04][applause] And so he wants to renegotiate NAFTA, and I'm on board with that. In fact, Congress created, when they gave Obama fast-track trade authority to try and do the TPP Trans-Pacific Partnership, they created a new consultative group. And turns out, because of my seniority, I'm on it. So I get to go to these meetings and talk about how we're gonna renegotiate NAFTA. And I actually find this guy, Wilbur Ross, to be pretty good. But he's getting his orders out of the White House. And, you know, we've talked about the softwood lumber problem we've had forever with Canadians, giving away their stumpage and then, you know, taking over our markets here. Not fair competition. We keep winning trade complaints against them, but there's a provision in NAFTA that allows a secret tribunal to overturn our trade actions, and that's happened three times now. I talked to Wilbur Ross. We gotta get rid of the secret tribunals. He said, "Yeah, I agree." Issues with trucking, cross-border trucking from Mexico. Mexican truck drivers are horribly abused for the most part. They don't have hours of service requirements. They don't have mandatory drug alcohol testing. And they don't have a meaningful commercial driver's license registry because everything down there works. They can go to stop you, you pay a bribe. I mean, whether or not, you know, there's no meaningful record. You know, we lost a trade complaint to Mexico under NAFTA, which says we have to allow their trucks free access to the United States. We had a system before where their trucks came over the border, dropped the trailers, and then they went back down with empty trailers. Because there's no U.S. company that wants to drive in Mexico because of the, all the problems with, you know, basically holdups and bribes and all that stuff. So we had a system that worked for both countries, but we lost that. Anyway, I'm worried now that they're not ruined and delivered, so I've introduced a bill, which is 21st century workers' bill rights, which points to the 10 things that need to be changed in NAFTA and all future trade agreements. And I'm pushing hard on that. We'll see where that'll go. So that's a few things that I'm working on, a few things that are going on. We get a big crowd. Hopefully, we have a functional microphone for out there. We do, Whitney. And so if you raise your hand, Whitney, right there, we'll hand you the microphone, and then you ask a question. So just look around. There's a hand right there. There you go.
Hi. Nina Turner, thank you for being here. My name is Eleanor Parsons, and I did write you a letter. So you don't have time to listen to this, right? You have it. We'll have it in the office.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, well, I'll just sort of summarize, or other than, you know, we got a big crowd, a lot of questions, so.
Well, I heard that the petition for summer progress, coalition petition, was presented to the DNC, and they refused to consider it. Was that true?
I'm afraid I don't know what you're talking about, so I don't, I'm not aware of the DNC's internal workings or what petitions they may or may not have received, so.
Well, Nina, you know, Nina Turner, our revolution, the president of our revolution. And I think she had a push for a people's platform. And there are several bills here that I have, and I'm wondering what the status of those are, any of my new bills. And HR 676, is that the number of them? Can you remember the numbers?
There's been 5,000 introducers on the horizon, but I think 676 is John Conyers', Medicare for All bill. I'm on that bill, so.[1353.83][1353.83][applause] It needs work, which even he will admit Bernie was trying to rewrite it to make it work better. Go ahead.
It's a case of for all, HR 88.
Thank you. I don't know. I'm on any, a number of bills to make college more affordable and provide personal scholarships to people out of my pay raises, but I, the number of that one, I don't know, so. Okay. What's that? Okay. No, just someone said he got one of those scholarships.
Workers' rights, HR 15, where's the way debt?
Look, I'm just gonna say, I mean, I don't know the numbers. I mean, you know, workers' rights are a key part of this, our trade policy and all that. So I mean, I'd be happy to, you know, address this in more detail in writing if you provide it rather than...
I have provided it.
Okay, yeah. Well, like I say, we're getting a regular amount of correspondence. We're trying to keep up. We're doing pretty well. We're getting about...
Thank you.
We're getting about 10,000 a month, so we're trying to keep up. And my staff hasn't gotten any bigger.[1420.16][1420.16][laughter]
Hi, I'm Peter, talking about long-term care. They have just priced us out after 21 years of paying for it. I have to quit.
Oh, long-term care insurance, yeah.
They're up to now. They want $1,000 a month.
Wow.
And it's breaking my heart.
Yeah.
I'd just like to read you some numbers we have. We go back to 2006, $457. We go up to 2011, it goes to $759.5. 4/22, 2011, dropped to $615 because we paid a lot of benefits. So you know, you keep paying that one. 2014, they asked the Oregon State Insurance Commission for a 3% increase, and got it. So we go to $928. Much more benefits. Now we're down to where we can afford it. Until 2017 comes along, 40% increase from president and granted. So now we're up to $962 from $457. And we can't afford it. The bridge is up 40% because I'm on buy.
Right.
So we're in the same position with this company. And I'm pretty good with people. The only bad, I have so far found three presidents that have counted on in the last 14 years. And the secretaries are doing the transitional things.
Right.
Okay. My idea is, we're planning on their part because they don't have enough revenue. You should not cause emergency on our part to make that difference.
Right. Well, I agree. Unfortunately, this goes back to what I talked about on terms of the Affordable Care Act. The health insurance industry, including long-term care industry, is not subject to federal antitrust law or federal regulation. They're regulated at the state level. And obviously, the insurance commissioner here did a really poor job in terms of determining whether or not they had adequate reserves or what their investments were and what their premiums were, and just kept rubber stamping things, you know. So, you know, I think they should have to refund your premiums personally, you know, with interest over the time that they held them because you acted in good faith and they priced you out of the market. But it's subject to state law and not federal law until I'm successful in changing the federal law. So you've got to talk to your state rep, state senator, and the governor about that.
I am working on that as well. Or thanks.
Yeah. And just for everybody's information, you know, a lot of people don't understand, and they think, they hear the word Medicaid and they think welfare. The largest group of people receiving Medicaid benefits are seniors and disabled people in long-term care. They are, you know, it's about 60% of the cost of the program. Another 20% goes to kids, and then there's another 20% in there. So these massive cuts that were proposed in Medicaid would have ended the funding for many seniors who are currently in long-term care. But to get on Medicaid, you have to virtually, you know, become, you have to shed almost all your assets to qualify the Medicaid under, you know, whatever requirements Oregon has put on your assets. I don't, I'm not covered on that. But again, pretty much subject to the state, but it's a huge problem, what's gonna happen. We're gonna see a lot of nursing homes close if they get the Medicaid cuts. They just won't even be there anymore.
Hi, Peter. Thank you for coming. My name is Sarah, and I really just don't know where to take this concern, and I'm hoping you'll give me some direction. The issue is social security, wanting to know, you know, where it stands. And then when student loans, the payments are taken out of people who are seniors in their social security, I just want to ask about that, if that has, if that is true that, you know, I've waited a long time. I'm turning 70 this fall, and I've waited to take social security so I can get a good amount, a decent amount. And, you know, I went back to school after I graduated my kids from high school and got them off to college. And I actually went into Peace Corps for two years down to Guatemala, and then wanted to get a master's degree in nonprofit management to do more work like that. And I racked up some debt, and I haven't been able to pay it off. Just wondering where that all stands, if money is being taken out of people's social security checks to pay off student debt.
I know that there's been some concerns. Rena here, she used to do social security. She... Rena, do you, but there was something on that, wasn't there, on taking student debt out of social security checks? Did we take some action to restrict or prohibit that, can you recall?
I'm not sure. I don't do...
Okay. We'll have to check on that. I at least was on a bill to, you know, prohibit that. I don't, can't remember whether it was an honor. And I said, "How about you follow the Kinder Morgan model, or maybe hire them to do your pipeline because they never use eminent domain? That would solve the issue." So that's where we're at, okay?
Okay, thank you. But my real question was, the Democratic leadership has been a failure for the past 10 years.
I agree. In 2010, I tried to get new leadership. I led a little revolution. I got, can't remember, 80 or 90 votes, and I failed.
Who would you prefer to have replace Nancy Pelosi? That's my big question.
Well, it's been a long time, you know, since, you know, she, you know, since 2010, there've been a number of promising people who've moved on. Chris Van Hollen went to the Senate and others. You know, the, I believe it's time for new generation leadership, and there are a number of very young members who I like. And we'll see, you know. But I, you know, I tried in 2010. I got my head... And we'll see, you know, but I, you know, I tried in 2010, I got my head handed to me, so, you know, I tried. Yes. It was the greatest democratic loss in the history of the United States and the history of the party I thought we needed in leadership.
Is there currently any legislation before Congress demanding that anybody that runs for the President of the United States pass to submit their taxes?
Yes, I'm on the post, I'm on the post. In the Republican Congress? What do you think? Okay, you got it. And there's another thing, which is, we don't even have to pass a bill. The Ways and Means Committee has the authority to demand any citizen's taxes. And in fact, that happened in the run-up to the resignation of Richard Nixon. There was a, people remember Watergate, but there was also a tax scandal with Nixon. And the Ways and Means Committee demanded his taxes. And then the Ways and Means Committee has the jurisdiction to release them and they released them. And that weakened Nixon and then history played out. The Ways and Means Democrats, on the day of organizing, made a motion to get his taxes. The chairman of the committee, please excuse my language, didn't know his microphone was on, and when the Democrats offered that motion, he said, oh shit. And, but they voted that on partisan lines. We have 10 times, I think, come to the floor with a privileged resolution asking that Congress, you know, ask, you know, use its lawful authority to contain his taxes, and 10 times on partisan basis it's been voted that. So, that answers your question. Well, Mueller probably already has his taxes, so.
Hi, my name is Cindy, I'm an uninsured female, and I'm insured for online. I pay cash for all my medical, guess what? I get huge discount when I pay cash. Oh, well, we don't have to bill insurance, we're saving a lot of money. So I, I would like to see equal access to healthcare for everyone. I don't want insurance, I don't want equal access. And I will support any plan in which Congress, the Senate, the President, all of you folks have the exact same access as me and everyone else in this country.
Well, you know, congratulations to you for being able to pay cash. Most people can't. And I do find that when I get my bills and I'm on a not very good plan, I'm in the DC Exchange, because I was thrown out of the Federal Employees Health Benefit Plan by Obamacare, that, you know, it says, your MRI would have cost $1,400, the discount is X, and here's your $100 copay. So you must be one heck of a bargainer to get them to give it to you for 100 bucks. So, good for you. Next.
Peter, thanks for coming today. My question is about infrastructure, which you know about. Is there anything under the federal radar concerning the tsunami threat and the infrastructure along the West Coast? We have bridges and roads that are failing here already. If we have a natural disaster, we know the states cannot cover that expense. Is there any plan in Washington to think about natural disasters, certainly, or anybody else?
Uh, well, actually, I've been working on that for a number of years. I went to Japan, I saw their early warning system, I've seen what they've done with their infrastructure. And I've been fighting to get investment in a real-time early warning system, which could save thousands, maybe tens of thousands of lives. And, you know, to have FEMA outline a plan for dealing with the disaster and what we can do preventively, and I've included that in legislation. But, you know, right now, you know, there's virtually no money available. We get a few million bucks, and I get some time to time allocated into this program, but it's very short-sighted. Oregon is working very slowly. I don't know that their new initiative is particularly oriented toward that. They just passed a bill to put a few billion dollars into infrastructure, but the state has a plan to reinforce the highway on the other side of the mountains, and then they have key points where they reinforce roads to get down into the valley and redo the bridges and things in those areas. How much of that is going to be done by their new initiative? I don't know, I didn't see that in the stories I've read about it and haven't had a chance to talk to any legislators, but, you know, the, back for a short while during the Clinton administration, we had a federal program through FEMA where you could go in and do retrofitting preventively. And Seattle got a big rant, they did a bunch of work, and they had a pretty good little earthquake and not much happened. So prevention can save lives and investment can save lives. And also, you know, we need to deal with the building codes. We had a kind of nonsensical controversy here in New Guinea where they were going to build a new city hall. And then someone suggested it could be upgraded to withstand an earthquake and then the city council sent, all the other buildings are going to fall down, why shouldn't the city hall fall? So they voted to not have a building that could withstand an earthquake and then ultimately they didn't build it. But, you know, forthas go in exactly the opposite way, which is all new construction has to meet the highest earthquake standards, which is 9+. And in Japan, everything, you know, they've rebuilt incredible amounts of Japan. And like, they have, they have a manual on what to do, and they say you're in your own facility for two hours, it tells you how to build children's, how to do this, how to do that. Every elevator has an emergency box and it gets wiped and stranded for days in the elevator. I mean, they've done amazing things. Plus, they have a real-time system. Now, it failed them in the last major quake because they, they had deep ocean detection and they predicted a certain tsunami. And then, but they didn't have real detection in terms of wave monitors, they were very close to shore. So they broadcast the alert instead of 12 feet, I think. And then by the time it got to shore, it was much taller. And by then, their whole system had gone down and they couldn't broadcast another warning. I got briefed by the guy who was in charge, he was virtually crying in the old days, he would have admitted. And he said, all these people died because they sheltered at 15 feet, unless you've been... So they now have a cellular-based system with reinforced cell towers that can withstand at 10, which is unimaginable. And they will have, they've got more ocean sensors, so they'll have real-time alerts, give people real information. They can shut down their high-speed train instantly, they can shut down, I mean, all their, I mean, all their infrastructure is set up to say, okay, earthquake, the shock wave is like 40 seconds away, the train stops. So, I mean, hopefully, make none of those investments at all, so. Okay, so, where's the microphone?
Here's that support representative Hallmark bill on student loan program, social security and the way to...
Okay, so the woman was here or left? I was, I remember there was a bill, I just didn't know what happened. It didn't go anywhere, but I'm on a bill to say that when you reach retirement age, your, your student debts are forgiven, so you don't have to have it taken out of your social security. So, wherever, whoever's got the microphone, yeah.
My name's Nina Bray and I just want to say that I hope everybody in this room realizes what you sacrificed to be our representative. And I hope everybody in this room knows that there's big money coming out of a fellow named Robert Spencer, who's a big hedge manager, who's going to try to take over and take Art Robinson.
What's his name? I can't remember his name. Mercer, Mercer.
Mercer, right.
Actually, yeah, again, we can't get deeply into politics, but there's a great New Yorker article called "The Money Behind Trump," which talks about the Mercer family. I was their first experiment. They spent about a billion bucks against me back in 2010, they failed. But, anyway.
Hi Peter, I'm Nina Turner. And, of course, I'm a sure healthcare for all. So if you want to talk more about healthcare at 7 o'clock tonight at Methodist Church. But there seems to be a misunderstanding about single payer, but I understand here we're having a growing population of support. And I'm just self-suppressed to see so many turning out at rallies and so on. I know the one we had is for now. We have big support for single payer. Do you find that's true, it's growing in Washington? And what can we do to help?
Well, you're right, there is, there is a huge misconception about single payer, which is, everybody thinks that the government is going to take over the healthcare system, the government's going to run the hospitals, the government's going to employ the doctors, et cetera. That's not the case. We're talking about how do we negotiate the prices that are charged and how do they get reimbursed, is what we're talking about, and how are people insured? So that's the, the most basic misunderstanding about it. I, you know, I don't know, I think there's more people on 676, which is not a perfect vehicle, and even John would have made a new floor, but it certainly begins the discussion. Bernie's staff is working on, whatever happened to that, Rena, the Bernie staff?
We're still working on it.
We're still working, okay. Bernie's staff is working on a sort of an enhanced version of 676 and they haven't got, you know, obviously, who knew healthcare was so difficult? So, anyway, but you're right, and I appreciate your long-term advocacy. See, I'm sorry, the woman who can bargain better than anybody else left, you might have a chat with her. Intrigued by the idea that I could get rid of my insurance and I could pay the same amount as I'm paying with my deductible now. I don't think that's the experience for most Americans, so.
And also part of it?
Yeah, there will, there is that too, yeah, so.
Are you a member of the 42? No, I'm not a member of that group, I've read a little bit about it. You know, I've offered my own ideas at the open debate that they come up with, I'm not sure who, I just read about it recently, I'm not sure who they are.
So who's got the microphone? Okay.
Hi Peter, I'm a disabled veteran. I wanted to, first of all, thank you for all you've done to help me with my plane and my family, otherwise I don't know where I'd be, I'd probably be out on the street. We've done a lot to veterans throughout the state and throughout the country and I just want to give a big thanks for that. My question is about, in the infrastructure, about railroads. I understand with Trump's budget, he was planning on basically cutting funding for all long-distance trains. With my health problems, I do not travel by plane because I have to buy two tickets because of the small size of the seats and also the security checkpoints are really health prohibitive for me. Is there anything being done to secure funding to continue AMPREX so that the trains do continue to run? Because it's my only way to travel outside the state and to support the state.
Right. Well, we passed a pretty, something called the FAST Act in the last Congress, which included five years of funding for AMPREX. Not great funding, not what they need to improve the service, but enough to continue to limbo on. And Trump is proposing to cut that. I, I think the House Appropriations Committee cut, but not as much as he proposed and their bill isn't going anywhere anyway. So I expect we will maintain the status quo, which is not optimal because there's a lot of investment that needs to be made in the system. And then, it's, I think a lot of people in red states who voted for Trump would be surprised because he also wants to eliminate what's called essential air service, which is for small communities scattered throughout mostly the heartland of the country. So they would lose both their rail access and their air access, so they better really like driving. So, you know, again, I don't believe that he's going to be able to cut the essential air service program either, but none of this came from Trump. It came from this right-wing jerk named Nick Mulvaney, who's head of the Office of Management budget, was one of the founders of the House Freedom Caucus. He's among the most radical of the radicals. He would be in the top 5% of right-wing radicals in Congress and he's writing the budgets and he's a little jerk, so. Yeah, so, whoever, who's ever got the microphone? Speak up, someone's got it, where is it? You can't lose it. Okay.
Hi Ms. Fazio, my name's Josie Ume from the relation, but I'm sorry. I have two small questions. I'm in the science and math rather than politics, but is the Oregon Health Plan going to go away anytime soon?
Um, no, because of the House bill and the Senate bill that would have substantially reduced the expansion of Medicaid, which is what we think of as most of the Oregon Health Plan have not moved. So right now, it's got status quo funding. It doesn't mean that it's, if they had a higher amount under the Affordable Care Act for a few years, now the state's supposed to put out more money. I'm not quite sure how the state budget worked out in terms of that additional funding in this session. I don't, you know, but it's, it's going to be substantially the same.
Okay, and also, I have a student, my bachelor's degree from OSU, but there's something about education, I didn't read it. Does that mean that everybody gets some education? There was some kind of paragraph there. That doesn't mean that people with outstanding debts can do.
Well, we already talked about the social security, then I'm on a bill that hasn't gone anywhere to say that if you still have debts when you retire, they're forgiven if they're federal debts. Problem is if you have a private bank loan, we can't do that about that. And I also have legislation to allow anybody who has an existing loan to refinance at the lowest rate possible, which would be the treasury rate, which would be like 2.7% and get an extended repayment period. So I'm on a number of bills to provide relief to people throughout their lifetime and after retirement, say, plus I, when we reformed the student loan program when we took over the House in 2007 and '08, we did away with the bank loans because they were weakened by the collapse of Wall Street. The bank loans were scam. Banks would charge 8, 9% interest and if you missed a payment, they gave the loan back to the government. The government gave 100% of the loan and the government. And so they were getting high rates of interest with no risk. I've funded them numerous times. So we said, no more subsidized bank loans, we're going to make direct loans, we're going to allow people to have flexible repayment. I, you know, you don't have to pay if you earn less than 20 something thousand a year, and I want a bill to enhance that. You don't have to make payments and you don't accrue interest until you pass that threshold, et cetera. So unfortunately, a lot of those reforms were undone in one of the bad budget bills after the Republicans took back over, but, you know, we need to reform those programs or re-reform them again. So we're over and I've got a packed schedule after this, so we can take one more quick question. Someone has a quick question? Quick, quick.
Yes, Peter, you are a successful example on a red and blue state, being able to talk to a large range of people.
Yeah, Hillary won my district by 554 votes.
Right. But my point is, my question is, what's your secret? I'm a member of the Republican Party, I think more people want to be progressive, especially with the healthcare. What's your secret?
You know, I, I'll, you know, I just remember this really well. Years ago, I can't remember, it was some sort of Wall Street forum or trade, and Bernie Sanders was in caucus with the Democrats in the House and he was sitting there, and he stood up and he says, I know you're not going to listen to me, this was back when Bush was president, but you should listen to this guy. You know, George Bush won his district and he beat George Bush by 15 points. Maybe you could learn something. Well, I've been trying to communicate that to my leadership for years, but I think we've finally turned the corner with, with this last election and with the challenge of the primary and everything else and with Hillary's loss, that my leadership is starting to get it, that, you know, the, you know, lining up with Wall Street's free trade was never good for Democrats. So there's, there's a way.